Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission for June 28, 2010. If I might ask you all to stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. If the Recording Secretary would please call the roll. Commissioner Adam?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Lund?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Chair Grimney?
Here.
Now is the time for public comment. At this time, any person may address the commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on this evening's agenda. Should the commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff for scheduling at a future agenda. Please note that if you speak under the public comments, you must complete a white speaker's card and file it with the Recording Secretary before the public comment portion of the agenda is called. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. And there at the podium, there are lights for which will indicate when it turns green for you to speak, yellow when you have one minute remaining, and red when your time is up. Mr. Town, are there any announcements or continuances that you'd like to make at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is one brief supplemental report for the commission, and it has to do with Case 6A, the Blankstein case. And it is a portion of a landscape plan which has been submitted by the applicant, which is the basis for the color rendering that is included in your packet on page 14. So, this eight-and-a-half-by-eleven plan, which is at one-inch-equals-ten-foot scale, is the basis from which that color rendering was provided to the commission in the packet. And staff just felt that that may be relevant to the commission this evening. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the secretary please call 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding case PPD 2010-70192. Applicant, David Blankstein. Request to allow first and second-story additions to an existing two-story, single-family residence. Location, 5016 Hunter Valley Lane.
This evening, the staff report will be given by Mr. Joey Lynn of the Community Development Department. Good evening, Mr. Lynn.
Good evening, Chair Grimney, and Member of Planning Commission. For your first consideration this evening, a precise plan of design application has been filed to allow first and second-story addition to an existing, single-family home. The size of this addition exceeds 50% of the original footprint of the house. If I may direct your attention to the screen, the applicant is Mr. David Andrea Blankstein for case PPD 2010-70192. Project location is at 5016 Hunter Valley Lane. It's located just east of the Lakeview Canyon Road in the gated community. Project location is located south of Hunter Valley Lane. As you can see in the area photo, the proposed addition will be to both to the left and right of the existing home. The request on the first-floor addition is for a movie room to the left and also a guest bedroom. Also, a breakfast nook and two-car garage extension to the right side of the garage, and also a conversion to existing garage into a work/office space. On the second-floor addition, it'll be expansion of bedrooms to the left and right and also to the rear of the home. This requires Planning Commission approval because the addition exceeds 50% of the original footprint of the home. In this case, the proposed addition is approximately about 60% of the existing home. The project is exempt from CEQA. This is a view from the street, the front elevation of the existing home. The proposed addition will be to the left of the house and also to the right of the house. This is a picture of the left of the home, where the addition will be on top of the left wing in this case. There's also a second-story proposed addition to the right-side, single-story area, and also an expansion to the rear of the house behind the garage. This is a view of the rear elevation of the home. This is a picture of the rear yard, of the pool area. The lot area is approximately 1.14 acres. The proposed second-story addition height is at 27 feet and 3 inches. Currently, the existing roof ridge is at 29 feet and 7 inches. Proposed addition added is total of 2,022 square feet. The total square footage added combined is 7,328 square feet. The proposed color and materials does comply with the precise plan of design guidelines and also matches with the existing home. Neighborhood analysis, most of the houses in the vicinity are two-story, custom homes. Within the adjacent to the applicant's home, the total square footage, the proposed of 7,322 square feet is within the range of other houses in the vicinity, mainly between 6,000 to 16,000 square feet. Floor-to-area ratio is at .15, which is within the range of adjacent homes. It's actually to the lower side of adjacent homes. One of the conditions staff added was a requirement for planting of mature landscaping along the newly-proposed garage area. This came about because the neighbor was concerned, had a privacy concern. Staff put in condition number seven, which required evergreen landscaping along the area to provide privacy for the neighbors within the newly-added garage area. This is the landscape concept provided by the applicant's architect. In this case, the provided landscaping would be directly in front of the proposed garage addition between the neighbor's pool and the new garage driveway. Staff recommends approval of PPD 2010-70192 based on the findings and the conditions of the landscaping detailed in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation of the first case. Staff, available for any questions and comments?
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Fisher?
A couple of questions. Just wanted to confirm that there's still no objections to this project from the neighbors?
There wasn't any written objection from the neighbors. However, there has a neighbor's concern regarding about the privacy issue of the garage expansion that leads to this condition number seven, which staff included for proposed evergreen landscaping along the proposed garage area to provide a privacy issue for the neighbor.
And that satisfied their concerns?
That's staff's understanding.
And is the applicant okay with that condition?
Yes, the applicant's aware of the conditions proposed in the staff report.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lund?
Commissioner Fisher addressed my question. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Lynn. I noticed that, okay, we're adding three new trees, but trees grow up and the trunks are bare. Is there any thought of any hedges in there to screen for privacy?
On condition number seven, it's staff put in a condition that it should be evergreen landscaping to the intent of providing a privacy. It could be reviewed by the city landscape architect on the type of landscaping that's provided.
Okay, so there's no problem. Also, do you know if they plan to park a motorhome in that area on that new motor car court?
Staff is not aware of any motorhomes being proposed.
Okay. My only concern is that I know at times you're out by your pool, and if someone has a motorhome or trailer parked there, there really is glare off of it that will bounce back, and I was just concerned with that. But I think with the landscaping, it'll be okay then. Thank you.
Commissioner Adam, do you have any questions?
Just a quick one. Hi, Mr. Lynn. On seven, condition seven, it seems it's relatively vague, you know, mature plant material. Do we need to be more specific in there, or is that going to satisfy the party at 932 Country Valley Lane? I mean, attachment two talks about three new trees, et cetera. But is staff comfortable with just plant, mature material? No, there's nothing about evergreen in there. And you mentioned some evergreen business, but I don't see that in there either.
Perhaps if I could just interject quickly on this matter. The condition number seven is written in a general way with the purpose requiring that the applicant submitted a landscape plan. They have submitted a conceptual plan as indicated in the supplemental packet. That plan will then be turned over to the city's landscape consultant, and they will look at that in terms of plant species, size, location. And we left it general because it's very likely that it could include a combination of trees and shrubs to provide adequate screening. The applicant has indicated, as shown in the supplemental report, that they are proposing three new 24-inch box trees to match the existing. And the existing trees along that west property boundary, the larger ones, are liquid amber trees, so the intent would be to match those. But as far as the evergreen matter goes, that would be evaluated as part of our consultant's review of it. And that's a slightly broader context, to look at what other landscape materials are already in place, their size, what we're trying to screen, et cetera. That really is part of that evaluation. So, we didn't want to get too specific at this point in time, and this is, as you know, a standard way to address landscape issues that involve privacy. So, just a few background comments on that particular condition.
All right, thanks. That's your suffice. Thank you.
Any further questions of staff? If not, we'll go to the applicant, who is David and Andrea Blankstein. You will have 15 minutes. Mr. Blankstein, perhaps because we have two cards, one from you and one from your architect, would you like to make comments first, or would you like your applicant, your architect to speak and then follow behind him?
Good evening. My name is Larry Briskly. I'm the architect for David and Andrea Blankstein. I live in Moore Park, California. Thank you for reviewing our project, and I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you tonight. As an introduction, our architectural firm provides plans and designs for the community Club Estates and on a number of different occasions for many of the different property owners, including Marion Richard Carpenter, Tina and Dirk Gates, Janet and Ray Shear, all of which I'm sure you're familiar with their names. So, we come with a fairly high reputation and credibility to be able to assist people like the Blanksteins, and we're very familiar with the architectural guidelines, community standards, and working with the planning department in these matters. The existing home that the Blanksteins have was built over 20 years ago. They were one of the original property owners in the Club Estates community. At the time when they built the home, they weren't able to realize all of the dreams that they had because 20 years ago, they were younger and had a more limited budget at the time. Our new project is an expansion of their existing home, but many of the expansions are truly just to improve upon rooms that were somewhat substandard today. So, the extension of the garage is to facilitate getting a workroom, a laundry room, some of the facilities that were minimized in the original planning of the home. The other expansions are for increasing bedroom sizes, increasing the master bath size, and truly the only real change to the property is the addition of a home theater or a bonus room that's on the left-hand side of the house. The remainder of the rooms, including the garage, are simply expansions of the fabric that's there now. As I mentioned, the home was built 20 years ago. Since then, the conditions of the property have changed. There's neighbors that now live next door. And considering what Joey mentioned with respect to the neighbors, we initiated the idea, working with Joey, of planting three trees to assist in screening the neighbor's property. The neighbor's property and the Blanksteins' property are two completely different types of properties. The Blanksteins' property, as you may have seen in the photographs, is a private, tranquil backyard space where it's a very relaxing and resort-type environment. The neighbor has a resort-type environment as well, but it's quite the opposite. It has a water slide and loud music and the ability to basically change how the Blanksteins' backyard was being used. So, the expansion of the two-car garage on the right-hand side actually provides a veil or provides them the privacy that they once had between the neighbor. And it wasn't something that they objected to when the neighbor built the pool. They didn't feel that they had the right or didn't feel they needed to come to the commission or, excuse me, to the planning department to request trees or landscaping to provide what they're willing to provide today. They themselves felt that it wasn't something that they would object to. So, they come, you know, open-handed today with the, or open-minded, I should say, with the idea that if the neighbors have a concern, they would mitigate that by basically doing one-for-one. They're removing three trees, liquid ambers. They would replace three liquid ambers in kind. The planting of the trees are very much like the same plant materials or the same pattern. The, I'm going to move this up just a little. The trees are put in the same spacing. They're pretty much in the same proximity to the side property line as the existing trees. And if you look at the site plan or at any of the photographs, you can see that the liquid ambers provide a fairly capable screen and massing between the two properties. The specifics with respect to the types of plant materials that might be planted, and Mr. Town brought up that this would be reviewed by the landscape architect for the city. But the Blanksteins are willing to continue adding shrubs, continue with the same landscape materials. Many of the materials probably will not need to be removed against the fence line such that they'll provide adequate screening as they do today. There will be no motorhome parked in the driveway. It's something that the Club Estates community restricts, except under a temporary basis. So, if someone were coming to fill their motorhome up, they could do that, but there's no storage of motorhomes allowed in the community. And a couple last points, and I think Joey brought these up. We're here tonight because we're at 60% instead of 50%. We're not very far off, 10% being the difference, in the floor-area ratio to the footprint of the building. The building itself, or the design itself, is on the list that Joey prepared, the second lowest for the floor-area ratios. The neighboring properties around it go between 14% and 32%. We're at 15%. The right side of the property has a 27-foot, 6-inch setback. A 20-foot setback is the minimum required, so they exceed, or we exceed, the setback by 7 feet 6 inches on the right side. It's a one-story element. You are allowed a two-story building at 25 foot on that same side yard condition. It may still need one-story massing, but it would be allowed at 25 foot. The left side of the building has a 20-foot, 6-inch setback, and again, it's a 20-foot minimum setback to a one-story element. The front and rear yard setbacks far exceed the minimum requirements. The design of the building and the style of architecture is complementary and consistent with every detail of the building. In fact, the precast concrete work, the window type, the roofing materials, all 100% the same. The height of the addition is at 27 foot 3 inches at the two-story element. It's at 17 foot at the one-story garage element. The maximum height in the community is 32 foot, and the existing home is only 29 feet 7 inches, so we're well under even the existing home or maximum heights. That, in our mind, gives relevance to support and approve the project, and we hope to get that from you tonight. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Questions of applicant? No questions?
Thank you.
Now, we'll go to the public comments. I have, for the record, two written statement cards in favor. We have one speaker card. It's from Les Shapling. Mr. Shapling, if you'd like to come to the podium, if you could state your name and city of residence, and you will have five minutes.
My name is Les Shapiro. I am the neighbor to the west, 932 Country Valley Road in Thousand Oaks. I'm here just not in opposition to this project at all. That I understand and I appreciate that the city is going to look at the architect plan. We're just looking to make sure that we continue to have privacy. And we've been planting, we've only been there a couple of years, so we haven't been there for 20 years, and the Blanksteins have been great neighbors, and so we have no problem with this plan. If, you know, just privacy, so, and I assume that I, from what I heard tonight, they're looking for privacy as well. So, I'm sure, you know, everybody's going to do, you know, take care of the situation. But, so, if they're taking away three trees but adding the driveway for the whole length of their property, I would think maybe it would just need more than three trees replaced. But again, I guess that's going to be up to the city, and so we appreciate the city's findings, and I don't think there's going to be any issues with that, and, you know, we're all for it.
Are there any questions of the speaker? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to city staff for any additional comments.
Staff just wants to make sure condition number seven is satisfactory for Planning Commission.
Is there any additional questions of city staff? Okay, if not, we'll go back to the applicant. You have five additional minutes for any comments that you'd like to make. Okay. Okay, if there's no additional questions for anyone, we will go back to, we will close the public hearing and go to the commission for any commission comments and/or motion. Commissioner Lund?
Thank you, Chair. This is an example of a good project. We have some neighbor cooperation, and you're listening to the neighbors, and you've reached a handout, and as evidenced by the fact that you've added some additional landscaping. There's no waivers for this project. HOA approval. It's not the largest far-floor area space. I mean, this is what we like to hear. We appreciate you coming down here tonight. So, it's my pleasure and honor to move staff's recommendation on this case.
Comments to the motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. And I also will vote for the motion. I'm sorry. I think that this is a good addition plan, and I think that you're very aware of the privacy issues with the neighbor, and I'm sure that you'll go along with the landscaping plan.
Any additional comments to the motion? If not, Commissioner Lund, do you have any final comments?
No, thank you, Chair.
Okay. If we could please vote. Motion passed, 5-0. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the Planning Commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within 10 days. Will the secretary please call case 6B?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6B regarding case PPD 2010-70166. Applicant, Jeff Daymood. Request to allow first and second-story additions to an existing two-story, single-family residence. Location, 34 Fallbrook Avenue.
The staff report this evening will be given by Mr. Joey Lynn from the Community Development Department. We're keeping you busy tonight, Mr. Lynn. Good evening.
Good evening. For your second case, a precise plan of design application has been submitted for, from Jeff and Carol Daymood. Locations are 34 Fallbrook Avenue. This is for construction of one- and two-story additions to existing two-story home. If I may direct your attention to the screen. The project site is located southwest of Borchardt and Reno Road. This is an area photo of the project site. The proposed addition will be to the north of the home, which is the left side of the The request is for a first-floor addition consisting of guest bedroom and bathroom addition, and also a family room expansion to the rear. And for a second-floor addition, it'll be for a bedroom expansion. The expansion on the second floor consists of entirely on the left side of the dwelling. This requires Planning Commission approval because the proposed addition exceeds 50% of the existing footprint of the home. In this case, the proposed addition is 69%. The project is exempt from CEQA. This is a front elevation view of the proposed home. The proposed addition is entirely to the left side of the existing dwelling. This will be the view of the left elevation area. The addition will be behind the garage on the first and second-story addition to the left side. This shows the relationship between the proposed addition applicant's home, which is the right, and the neighbor's property to the left. This is a view of the rear elevation of the proposed addition. Another view from the rear of the proposed addition. The lot area is .17 acres, which is approximately about 7,500 square feet. The proposed height addition, the roof ridge, is at 23 feet. The total addition is 1,039 square feet. The total after proposed addition is 3,258 square feet. The proposed height complies with the height of the R1 zone. The building material and roofing colors all comply with the precise plan of design guidelines and also matches with the existing home. The neighborhood consists of homes in the mix of one and two stories. The neighborhood consists of homes in a mix of one and two stories. The proposed addition with a total of 3,258 is approximately 10% larger than nearby homes, but it's within the range of the adjacent, including adjacent tract. The adjacent homes are approximately between 1,600 to 3,800 square feet. The floor area ratio is at .43, which is on the high end of comparing to adjacent homes. Although this proposed project is larger than the neighborhood, staff does believe that this proposed addition does compose of architectural details and elements, and is also designed to match the neighborhood. The proposed addition is recessed from the street and also recessed from the neighbors, providing less impact to the neighbors in the street. It does meet with all the setbacks and parking and height requirement. Staff recommends approval for PPD case 2010-70166.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Do we have questions of staff? Okay. We will go now to our applicant. Our applicant is Mr. Jeff Daymood, who is being represented this evening by Mr. Rick Moranga. Mr. Moranga, you'll have 15 minutes. If you could state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Good evening. Rick Moraga, City of Camarillo. I'm here to represent my client, Jeff Daymood, and, thank you, Mr. Lynn. It's a pretty complete description of the project. We basically tried to make an addition that balanced the home, that fit with the neighborhood, and didn't have too much of an impact with the neighbors in the surrounding area. Primarily, we're trying to expand the home to accommodate an elderly relative, to be part of the extended family. On the second floor, the bedrooms are very small. It's an older home, and so part of the design also included expanding that upstairs to create a better master suite. Other than that, I believe that we accomplished what we needed to do and try to fit in, like I said, with the neighborhood and not have too much impact.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If not, we'll go back now to city staff for any additional comments.
Staff doesn't have any more comments or...
Are there any additional questions of staff? And then we'll go back to the applicant. Do you want any additional statements you'd like to make? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for any commission comments or motion. Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. I was out at this property and noticed that there is a one-story house, as you face the house on the right side, but this whole addition is going to be on the left side of the property, and that's a two-story house, and I drove behind them. I think it's Maynard, it's the street behind them, and there are two-story houses behind them. So I think that this is a good fit in the neighborhood. And with that, I will move approval of PPD 2010-70166 with the conditions and findings as in the packet.
Comments to the motion? Commissioner Adam? Would you like to make your comments again, Commissioner Adam?
Perhaps I should. Yes. Oh, boy. Yes, most of the additions are away from the street, towards the back, and I've just been saying with only 1,500 square feet in a two-story house, I could see why you would certainly want a little more room. Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Reynolds, do you have any final comments to your motion? If not, we can vote, please.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within 10 days. Mr. Towne, do we have any Community Development Department referrals and reports?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page 27 of your packet this evening is a schedule of a couple of cases that we are looking at for upcoming agendas. However, for the very next agenda on July 12th, we do not have any hearings scheduled for that evening, so at this time, I anticipate certainly that that meeting will be canceled. That's the July 12th meeting. And then the next meeting would be July 26th. We do have one case that is tentatively scheduled for that evening. And then beyond that, of course, beyond August, we are beginning to schedule cases for September. So I will keep the commission informed as to the case that is scheduled for July 26th. But as I mentioned, at this time, we do not anticipate a meeting on July 12th.
Thank you, Mr. Towne. Commissioner Adam, could you give us a motion to approve the minutes of June 21st?
Yes, I'd be delighted. I'd like to move to approve the minutes from July, when was it?
June 21st.
June 21st, yes, thank you.
I know it seems odd because it was just last week. Could you vote, please?
Motion passed, 4-0, with Commissioner Fisher abstaining.
Are there any AB 1234 reports to be given? Any commissioner comments? Commissioner Lynn?
Thank you, Chair. It has nothing to do really with the purview of this commission, but I just thought that this might be a good time to remind our residents of the city and folks that might be viewing this. I'm a retired highway patrol chief, and we've lost five officers so far this month. And for folks that may be listening, this is a good time to support our law enforcement and our fire and our EMS and the people that serve us 24/7, 365 days a year. They do an important job, and a lot of times, they don't get the recognition that they deserve. So keep their families in your hearts and your minds and give the support to our local community service people. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynn. Okay, so then now we, oh, Commissioner Reynolds?
I just wanted to say that it's nice to see some Boy Scouts in our audience tonight. Hopefully, they're working on a badge, and will go on to become Eagle Scouts eventually, and welcome tonight. It's nice to see the youth involved.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Okay, so now at this time, we'll go ahead and adjourn back here for our next regularly scheduled meeting on July 26, 2010. Thank you and good evening.